I'm going to open the public hearing on a site plan for a self-storage facility at Grove Avenue.
East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public...
Okay, I ask you to take your conversations outside so we can continue the hearing.
The East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 19, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in the East Long Metal School Committee Conference Room located in East Long Metal High School, 180 Maple Street, East Long Metal, for case site 2018-02 Self-Storage at Grove Ave. A request for the site plan approval for a proposed self-storage facility on 9.58 plus or minus acres located at zero Grove Ave, SS's parcel ID 15-32E, Industrial Zone District. Appropriate Baldwin Street LLC, 46 Center Square, East Long Metal, Mass. Information relating to this application is in file with Public Inspection and to East Long Metal Planning Board's office located at Town Hall, 60 Center Square, and is available for review by the public during regular business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Frank Fitzgerald. I'm an attorney with offices at 46 Center Square in town. In minutes of full disclosure, I should point out that I'm not just the attorney for this project, but also the principal, along with Mr. Charles Richards. Mr. Richards and I purchased this property with a view towards some development and have explored several alternatives, and it seems that this potential self-storage facility kind of meets the needs for the, from the point of view of the town, because it doesn't create any challenges to the infrastructure of schools, and from a financial viewpoint, it works well for the development. We've had some discussions with regard to neighborhood concerns, so maybe I could go over a few of the points that we're considering before we go any further, if that's all you need. So with respect to neighborhood concerns, we know from one of the neighbors at least that there's a concern that during construction that will be a significant amount of noise, and that's true. Construction requires noise, but we're well aware of that. We're well aware of their concerns, and we'll be doing what we can to make sure that the hours of construction are limited to the appropriate hours, and also that in terms of noise, that the contractors will abide by the idling requirements of vast law, as well as, we understand now that there's a new type of backup beeper that is less intrusive on the neighborhood, doesn't call us fire, and we'll make sure that that is put in place with our contractors. We know that security is an issue, people, and this, right now...
Could someone please ask the people outside to take their meeting elsewhere? Thank you.
Thank you. We know that security is an issue, and certainly, from the point of view of this development, we would be sure that there were surveillance cameras and motion detectors throughout the property to make sure that this is not a problem for the owners or the neighborhood. The hours of operation would be typical for these types of operations. There may be some people with twenty-four access, but normally, there wouldn't be. There would be someone on site during the daytime hours. Traffic is not an issue as far as these types of operations are concerned. We've done some research and some surveys, and we know that self-storage units are the second lowest traffic generator next to self-storage, so we're content that we're not a big generator. There will be no storage of hazardous materials. We'll be very careful with that. One of the principles of owning and operating one of these operations, and obviously, I haven't done this before, but we're learning, is to make sure when you sign the contract, you sign the contract with a good person. You sign a marital agreement with someone that's not going to be using it for nefarious purposes. Lighting is also a concern for the neighborhood. We would be sure to make sure that, at the time the lighting's designed, that the photometrics are done to make sure that the lighting won't be intrusive on the neighbors. With that, I turn it over to Rob to show you the project numbers.
Thank you, Attorney.
Okay. Should I speak into the mic?
Yeah, that would help.
Good evening again. For the record, Rob Lebec from our Lebec Associates, representing Baldwin Street LLC. The plan that you have before you is a proposed storage facility, as Mr. Fitzgerald had mentioned. We're planning twelve buildings. All of those buildings will be under 7,500 square feet. The site itself is at the end of Baldwin Street, kind of at the turnus of Baldwin-Glendale Road. There's also Fifth Street, which comes in at this location here, and the property continues on to the north. Cusick Brook is on the east side down here. We have a number of wetland resource areas associated with Cusick Brook, specifically a perennial stream in Cusick Brook itself, as well as some bordering vegetated wetland along that. So our project has basically stayed away from or out of that almost in its entirety. We just actually received an order of conditions, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's been written yet, but we, the Conservation Commission closed their hearing and voted the other night, so we have received approval, and we'll be receiving, we anticipate, an order of conditions to that effect. We have a, basically, the buildings themselves, we have the access aisles around the buildings, which are, you know, consistent with tumulus concrete and curbing associated with that. We have a stormwater drainage system that consists of deep sump catch basins, which are offline from the trunk lines themselves, run through manholes, through HDP pipe, and then into a stormwater basin located, we'll call it, at the northwest corner of the property. I was like, I'm...
I'm sorry. You can move that.
Oh, thank you.
Just, I just lift up the whole thing, and either way.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So the, again, the buildings, the twelve buildings that we talked about, the tumulus concrete, or we'll call it asphalt, areas around...
Excuse me, we can't see now. Can you go on the other side? Sorry, neighborhood. Sorry.
We'll turn it a little bit here.
We've got plans to propose here, so...
Okay, great. I don't know what I was talking about.
It's hard.
So we also have some landscaping that we're proposing. Being an industrial site and having wetland resource areas that are all wooded along the, what's called, that east side, we're really not proposing a heck of a lot. We will have a tree line. The lighter green area is lawn, essentially. Dark green area is going to remain wooded, so the folks, anyone that lives up in this back area here, this will all remain wooded. Our limit of work is right at the delineation point between the light green and the dark green, so this is really the area of impact as part of the project. So along the western side of the property, we know that there's a gentleman that was at the Conservation Commission meeting. We talked to him. He goes at number five, Fifth Street. We're also aware of the houses in this area, so knowing that the residential properties we're proposing, I actually have supplemented since the last plan that I believe the planning department has seen. We've supplemented the plantings along this edge, gone with another row of alternating evergreens, and then continued that planting down to where we believe that this wooded area will remain and provide a buffer. So that has been addressed. I do have a copy of that plan for you. Don't let me forget, it's folded, so you got it. So with that, I can go through the details of the drainage system, or talk about some of the other items that you'd like?
Yeah, could you go through, this has supposedly a lighting plan on it with lighting levels which are impossible to read, so maybe you could explain the lighting plan and the levels of lighting?
Sure. We do that on purpose.
Of course.
Do you want sheet number that might be?
C7.
Thank you. I don't know if I have my C7. Do you have C7? I think we submitted it under separate cover after initial...
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much. The photometric plans that we, I'll try to clip it, it's probably easier just to explain it to you. So the photometric plans that we put together are based on the requirements that they be dark-sky compliant. Ever so subtly on the plans, there are delineated areas or rings around the lights themselves. Most of these are wall packs. They're WP2, so they'll be wall packs on the building. So anything that says WP2 is a certain type of light, and the other one would be WP3. So I do have a copy of what these buildings will look like. They're fairly low, gabled end roof, and in a typical metal structure that you would expect, Butler-style building. I don't know the specific make and model. I do have samples of the building itself that I'll give you for the colors, just for reference.
What's the height of the building?
The total height, Charlie, do you remember? Charlie Richards, one of the proponents, do you remember the total height? I think it's like fourteen feet, if that, well under the 35 required, yeah?
So the lights are on the building at fourteen feet?
Correct.
Down?
Correct. Yeah, they're down, they're down.
They're actually at ten feet.
Yeah. So, and that's actually a good point. Back to, thank you. So this is, this is a copy. Can you see that? So yeah, so everything, the foot candles are hard to read, but everything is shielded into, really into the site. I think we have one light pole at the front of the site, if I remember. LP, there's one. Everything else is on the buildings themselves. So the grading that we have on the site is pretty interesting, and I think it's important to mention. This is the landscape plan, but you'll see that there's contour along this edge. What we're planning on doing is lowering the grade adjacent to the residential properties, so we're cutting into the slope over on this side. These dark lines that you see here, these are contours. So we're dropping from an elevation of approximately 240 now to roughly 228 over here, and from an elevation up at the end of Fifth Street of like 232 now to about 226. So this will be set into the landscape, so the buildings are only about 14 feet high. It'll be set into the landscape on that edge, and then we come back, as we come to the east, we come back and match up with existing grades, so we don't have a lot of impact on the east side, but we're cutting down and we're also planting. So if you think of the cross-section of this, we'll have the folks up on Fifth Street, the vegetation planted high on that slope. The slope will drop down to three to one with a little swale at the bottom. We'll come ever so slightly up to the buildings. The buildings will be 14 feet high, so the folks on Fifth Street, not to say they won't see anything, but they will not be looking at these structures. Specifically, back in this area here, there'll even be more of a cut. But the nice thing is, we're not cutting near the wetland resource areas. We're cutting the other side. We've done extensive test pits in the area. We, you know, we're familiar with the material. We anticipate there will actually be a market for the material with some of the projects going out of town.
So maybe I'm mathematically deficient, but if you're dropping 12 feet...
Yeah.
And you're putting up several rows of evergreens?
Correct.
Are they six inches tall? Because how should people be able to see the top of the buildings if you're coming down 12 feet?
Yes.
And your plantings are...
Well, I'm trying to be conservative in my estimate. You know, things get planted, they're not a complete screen all the time when they initially go in.
Yeah.
Ideally, they will be, but yeah, you're right. I mean, these are going to be hard to see. But they, but once they're, you know, once the plantings take, and, you know, we typically design these planting plants for, you know, five to 10 years down the road, so as long as we put mature enough vegetation in, which Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Richards are committed to doing, we think we can achieve a screen right away.
Can you review your drainage plan?
Yes, sir. So we have a series of catch basins. What happens is Fifth Street, you know, the water kind of runs off this way now. Fifth Street's higher. This area, again, drops down. So we have, everything with these storage units pretty much has to be flat, because we're not staggering the buildings themselves, and they're long, so it's pretty much got to be flat. So in between these, we're dropping away from the building very slightly. We have a low point between the buildings in these areas here, and low points here. So we have a series of low points that are kind of dropping down, coming back up, dropping down, coming back up, ever so slightly. We're picking that drainage, the sheet flow from that up in catch basin here. We have catch basins, a catch basin in the corner, which is offline, so when I, what happens is, if you have a catch basin in line, you're going to have problems. You can have sediment issues. So we have the deep sump catch basins, a four-foot sump, offline from our system. The trunk line ties into a manhole. That continues on. There's another catch basin here to pick up the water coming down Fifth Street. So we're accommodating and have designed our drainage system to accommodate that subshed from Fifth Street. That ties in here, continues on. There's another catch basin that ties in. This trunk line here, between the buildings, ties in, continues on. Another offline catch basin, an area drain to catch the water as it comes off of this slope back here. The water behind this building splits from a high point, it's at the low point of the hill, but at the high point of that low swale, and then runs this way and this way, so the water's split behind the building. An area drain here, then continues on, catch basin, manhole, manhole, out to a flared end that is deposited into the stormwater basin. If there's any concerns from the neighbors about water and stormwater going in a direction, unless it was holy water, it's not going to go uphill. So what we have down here is, we're at a grade of approximately 210. The adjacent properties are at about 230, so you're about 20, they're about 20 feet higher, so they really should have nothing to worry about. In the event that this system did fail, which we always look at, we want to make sure there's a fail safe, the, there's an overflow here that would continue on in our property and then run to the wetland resource area. So if everything, all else fails and we get, you know, a 200-year storm, that would overflow and then run through the buffer zone, filtered through the buffer zone into the wetland, and this would all remain untouched here. This, our crenulated pattern here is the, is pretty much the edge of what will be left for vegetation.
So that basin will be in the area that earlier showed as wooded, and so it will not be, that will take away from the wooded, yeah?
Yes.
There it is. Okay, I see. I see the light green now. Okay. So still have a buffer.
Yeah, so there will still be a buffer here, and here. Again, this will be lower. There really should be, and again, this is not going to have buildings, so there may be a filtered view through here to the basin, but we can assess that.
And I take it from the configuration, you show that you're not going to be doing vehicle storage at this site?
Correct. There's really not, there's, you know, I don't know that we're necessarily going to, well, within the buildings or exterior?
Not the exterior.
You mean, yards or...
A lot of these self-stores have parking lots, basically. Okay, you don't show that on here?
Correct.
In any place?
Correct.
So it's not part of this?
That's correct. We also are planning, you know, I know a lot of people are, there's a lot of attention of this at the Conservation Commission. They were concerned with the fact that anybody could come along and use the storage, and what would they be storing in it. These will all have cameras. The entire site will have cameras, and there is proposed, and this is an important point, and I started bringing it up earlier, there's an office, and this will be manned. It won't be manned 24 hours, I don't believe, but it will be manned, so when people come to rent these units, they'll basically, not that it's an interview, but they'll basically see who's renting them, and they'll be watching them bring the stuff in, at least through video monitoring. So there is, you know, if somebody's trying to bring in a nuclear bomb, we can, we will not.
Okay. Questions from the board. John?
I don't have any questions.
I don't, but I think the butters do.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah, it's like to get, like to hear...
We'll get there. So Fifth Street.
Yes, sir.
So what's the difference between the back property lines in the building, in the first building?
So this property line here or this building?
Yeah.
Fifty feet.
So how close to the building in the lower part of the, of the design, to the old rail line? And does that, and do you abut the old rail line, this is property?
Yes. I don't have the specific, rail line's kind of taken out now. It's kind of the old, it's just kind of a gravel path now.
The old rail line, yeah.
I can give you an approximate, because I don't have the specific edge of that gravel path on here, but...
Well, consider the property line is basically the right of way of the railroad.
Yeah, yeah, so it's right through here. Right at the top, the toe of this slope here, so right through here, so I'm going to say it's about 45 feet, maybe 40 to 45 feet.
Is there going to be any fencing around all of this?
There will be fencing, so we're, I apologize. Yeah, we'll be fencing the perimeter. We're not planning on fencing the stormwater basin. This will be a movable three-to-one slope.
Yeah.
So we're planning just around the perimeter, and the buildings themselves will make up a part of that fortress, or fort. So the buildings, we won't have fencing around the back of the buildings, so we'll have the building, we'll have a section of fence, building, section of fence, so it'll be an impenetrable barrier that's made up of the buildings and the fence.
The building is part of the fence.
Exactly. And we did talk to Connie about ornamental fence out front, and we've agreed to that, and I think it's on one of my sheets, but if it's not, we're happy to put it into the record that that's an ornamental fence, so that'd be a condition.
And so what is the total footage from your property line out to North Main? Because some of the people on your butters list are on North Main.
Oh, okay. Good question. I can tell you, we're at least 200 feet to Cusick Brook, and then another 200 feet probably beyond that, and I'm not sure what exactly happened right across Cusick Brook there. We have a locus. Yeah, so we're pretty far in. There may be some butters here at the end of these two streets. I'm not sure what those streets are.
And the developers didn't believe it's appropriate to fence off the rail line?
We will, we do have a fence in, along this edge.
That side?
Yes, it's all the way around. Yep, the entire perimeter.
Connie?
I don't have any questions.
I know, we do have the minimum 50-foot setback from the residential zone on the side yard.
Correct.
Okay, on that one building that's right up against the, do we have 12 feet on that one building that's right up against the last, third building on that side? Is this the side yard in a...
Yes.
Okay, an industrial is 12, 12 feet?
Yeah, and it's on the, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, good. Just checking. We have no further questions. We'll open it up to the public at this point? Questions, comments? Anyone? You can state your name and address and put a record.
Okay. In Ebert 20 Glendale Road, Power Plant Fitness, 45 Baldwin Street. So I noticed that you have addressed Fifth and you've addressed North Main, but you have not addressed Glendale. How exactly do you propose that, what is the distance of this between abutting the neighborhoods here? What is the distance of all your foliage?
He's, he's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please do.
He's supposed to go to here. So from here to here?
Yeah, and here to here.
So this is 25 feet from here to here, and what's the next one?
Here.
Here is about 12 to 15, probably about 12.
Okay. Also, how do you propose that you're going to stop the traffic from coming up Glendale? Because this past week, we have an 18-miler stuck on Glendale Road at about 11:30 at night, because he couldn't go back up and he couldn't come down because of the grade. You mentioned school buses in the earlier development. You've had school buses for the first time in 20 years at the same dirt hill, so that's going to have to be closed completely, and it's not going to have to be, we'll decide, because this happens every time a developer comes in. They say, "Well, we should take that into consideration."
We don't control that.
Let's take it into consideration. Also, you're talking about putting the foliage in. There happens to be a building on Baldwin Street that was proposed by one of the gentlemen. It was built. Foliage was supposed to go in. The building's now conveniently up for sale without the foliage, so exactly when do you guys step in and force the foliage that you say you're going to?
That's up to the building commissioner, who is the zoning enforcement officer.
But don't you, you guys put that in, so shouldn't you communicate with him within your building?
It's, no, it's someone...
No?
If someone complains that it's not in compliance, then the complaint goes directly to him. If we're not aware of it, nobody tells us.
I'm making you aware of it.
Well, make him aware of it.
I had every intention of doing so.
Okay, yes, that's the right way to do it.
Also, there's a parking lot for Baldwin. Where exactly is this entrance going to go? Because there happens to also be a telephone pole smack in the middle of the grass where 18-milers try to turn around, because there's not enough room for them to turn around on a Baldwin Street.
Connie, you have a little room to answer?
Yeah, please.
I don't know.
So the first, the first item was Glendale Road, so we don't control Glendale Road. It's not part of our property, so if you wish the town to, if you want a petition...
Well, I'm going to see it from where I'm located, so this concerns me quite a bit, because the lighting and the light that you propose here...
I'm sorry, let me clarify. You talked about the traffic on Glendale Road. So the traffic on Glendale Road is a town issue. If you wanted to petition potentially the town council, maybe you'd like...
Actually, let me address this. Glendale Road is public. The connection between Glendale Road and Baldwin Street is part of the parcel, the last parcel currently on Baldwin Street on that side. It's a private way. It's not a public way.
So meaning that being private, we could have it closed when we've once been told before we couldn't?
No.
No, it would be up to the owner of the property at Baldwin Street to take any action.
And I'm going to, you know, Mr. Fitzgerald, Attorney Fitzgerald can probably speak to this better, but there's rights to these rights away. You know, they're private versus public and everything else, but there's rights to pass and repass typically over these, so it's not like we can just, you know, close them off. The people have rights to them.
Right.
You know, and it's a more complicated issue. So we do understand your question and concern, and, you know, maybe there's a way for signage to be added. We don't anticipate any tractor-trailer trucks. You know, really, the biggest vehicle we're going to have is if there was ever a fire, we made sure that our site could accommodate that, but these are going to be typically passenger vehicles and...
Box trucks.
Small box trucks.
So those are happening.
And may I also ask that during construction, you will have your construction vehicles using Baldwin Street?
Sure, we would be happy to adhere to whatever is most logical.
Yeah, I mean, it's clear that that's the right way in.
Yeah.
This end of Glendale is a old street. It's a one-vehicle pass. It's not...
And we can certainly put, you know, signs out, as long as we're licensed to do so, to let people know where to go.
I believe there is a sign, there used to be a sign...
It's covered in foliage.
At the end of Baldwin.
There's one at one end of Baldwin, and there's another one at the end of Glendale. Unfortunately, the person who owns that corner of Baldwin doesn't maintain it properly, so the foliage has grown up and over the street that says, "No trucks."
Well, I wasn't thinking about that. I was thinking, I thought there was a directory sign on Baldwin at one time. I don't know if there still is, but...
Just as a point of clarification, man, where is your house again on the map?
I'm on the very corner.
Right.
So if this is Glendale...
Oh, it's not, I'm sure...
I'm the first house. If you go up that private dirt hill, I'm the first house.
Because the house that's there is actually, I believe, a group home at the moment?
No, it's a businesses.
The businesses, yeah. So that's industrial, yeah.
It's closer to here.
Right, okay.
But they're in here. Again, there's a parking lot here. So where exactly do you propose this is going to go? Because this, taking this out between the parking lot and the existing grass that's there between the parking lot and her home, there's a telephone pole smack in the middle, so where is there?
There's a telephone pole here, and there's another utility pole farther up, but I think that's probably the pole you're talking about. There's a couple of guy wires associated with it.
So you can go on the side.
Yeah, and then, I think you had a question on drainage as well. So the drainage from our site will not be going offsite. It's going to be coming back to the catch basin here, and then on site.
And the catch basins you said are not fenced, because there's a number of children?
Yeah, so this is actually not, so when I say catch basin, I mean, it's a concrete structure, you know, the grates you see in the hospital. There is a stormwater, oh yeah, what is it exactly? It's a bio-retention basin. It's like very shallow and will pretty much remain dry. It's a very... It's a very subtle depression in the front lawn. It's just going to be lawn area.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to question or address the board?
My name is Phil Ader. I live at 5 Fifth Street, East Long Meadow. And this, I'm a direct abutter to the property. I have a letter to pass it to you guys, and I have copies for each of it, just to make it easier. Maybe you could take a look at the first page?
Can you take this one?
I'll give you a point of order. I've got one here.
Want to make sure our support has it for the record?
Sure. It's basically summarizes what I would like to express concerns.
If you could summarize this quickly to the public.
Sure. My concerns are with the buffer itself to begin with. I know Rob's presented that they're putting a berm four feet up and they dropped the elevation. I would prefer an eight-foot buffer, an eight-foot berm because as it is, my house sits four feet above the level of the property to begin with. So putting an eight-foot berm and just bringing the hill level with my house at this point in here.
They're proposing to actually drop the rest of the property?
They're actually looking to drop the property down four feet to some degree. So I'm not sure whether the four-foot berm comes from their lower level drop, which would put it equal, oh, right now it is four feet below my property to begin with. So if they're going to drop another four feet?
It'll be eight feet down.
It'll be eight feet down, and if they put the berm on that, that puts the top of the berm at the level of my property.
Could you clarify?
Over here.
Could you clarify that, sir?
Sure. Yep. So, Phil?
Yes.
Phil's house is approximately 130, I'm sorry, 234, or adjacent to his house, so not the finished floor elevation, but adjacent. Our proposed grade for pretty much the building elevation is about 227. Okay?
Okay.
So then, we do have a minor, I wouldn't call it much of a berm, to be honest with you, but it's a minor contour that it's one or two feet. It's not a four-foot berm.
Okay, is that from the existing level or from the new level down?
It's actually exactly at the same level or one foot above. So we're not, we're not creating a berm up there.
Okay.
And one of the reasons we're not is we want to make sure that the water, that sheath flows off.
Sure. You don't want to block it.
Yeah, off the property doesn't, you know, it doesn't get blocked. We do have a couple of openings in our, you know, in our grading to make sure that that continues on. But not only that, but we're pretty much at the existing grade. So we were going to plan on achieving that buffer by planting at the top of the slope.
Okay.
There's an area approximately eight to 10 feet wide that will lend itself to plantings. We actually initially had one row of plantings. After the meeting with the Conservation Commission, we did add another row of plantings that are evergreens. If they're, you know, were specific types of evergreen that Bill wanted us to plant, we suggested that we would be happy to do so. But, and also to, you know, during construction, make sure that we're strategically locating these so that they, you know, have the most effect. But we're certainly, you know, committed to addressing the buffer, and we know that their residential property is adjacent to it.
Okay. Other issues you'd like to bring up?
The other concern is even this building here, I believe it's, it should maintain the 50-foot from the district line. And this building here looks like it's within the 50 feet of the district line, which affects my, my property and the aesthetics in the background. So I'm not sure why this building isn't on this map for approval when it's within the 50-foot buffer zone of residential property and industrial property. And I supply it in there an opinion by the town council that supports the opinion that the buffer zone starts with the district line versus the property line. If you don't, it's in my package there.
I see that.
It was back in 2005 that I issued that opinion.
Right, and I remember going through the...
Thank you, George.
Sorry?
Thank you. That's why I'm suggesting that this, this building here be removed from this plan if it can't perform to the 50-foot buffer zone. It should be 50 feet out there on the, on the industrial line. Because there's residential property right above it that's affected by two, never mind my own backyard. The other concerns I have, I put in the letter, is dealing with the operation. If this is approved, I have concerns on the construction phase with the noise level. I'm happy to see, hear that Mr. Fitzgerald try to address those with you. We had a bad experience last summer in this neighborhood when they put this parking lot in. And I don't want to have that same experience this coming construction phase.
Right.
Because my house is only 12 feet from this line, and it was unbearable when it was over 100 feet away. It's going to be miserable during this construction phase. And I think, I think I can work with Mr. Fitzgerald or with you and the board to try to minimize that impact, but it would be something that we have to coordinate.
Right.
But it's, but it can't be allowed to get to the level that it was last summer at all. It's totally unacceptable.
What was the issue last summer?
The trucks backing up constantly with the bells going off, the vibration of the area because of the excavator, the bulldozers and rollers, they vibrate. They vibrate the ground because they're not only compressing, but they're vibrating as they compress. It was terrible.
To clarify, Phil, to clarify, that was not this project.
No.
It was a different project.
Different project. That's why I'm saying it would be nice to work with you guys to address the noise of how you run your equipment and when you do it. I'm asking for restrictions on, a tighter restriction on the hours of the operation during the construction phase, even though I know the law says they can start at 7 o'clock in the morning and go to 8 o'clock at night. I was hoping maybe the board and that the applicant can come to an agreement that start later in the day at 8:30 and work maybe until 5:30 versus at times they work till 8:30 at night, which was totally unacceptable. It was so bad that my neighbor on the parking lot, two houses up from him, Mr. and Mrs. Marry, it was Mrs. Marion, she had to leave her house on the day. She couldn't stay in her house. It was terrible. And even I reached a point of no return where I had to go out and talk to the supervisor to say, hey, why don't you get some operators that know how to drive these heavy-duty equipment?
Okay, I get the point. Thank you.
How long was this?
Last summer.
Just the entire summer?
Almost the entire summer. It was totally...
And this was just for a parking lot?
This was just the parking lot on the side of...
Like a big parking lot or just, it was just for...
Probably 1/8 the size of this or less, less than 1/8 probably, wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
It was small.
Do you have an idea of how long this project would take?
I don't know. That's a good question that I asked Mr. Fitzgerald, how long the project would construct.
Roughly, I mean, absolutely.
It's a good question. So there's a, there's a decent amount of material that needs to come out of here. So I would, I would expect that, you know, if this were to start in August, they would try to have the earthwork done if they, you know, had a substantial number of trucks, which is going to be required. I mean, there's, you know, there's no sugarcoating it. There's going to be a construction operation here. But, you know, it would be, it's possible they could get it, you know, rough grading done by the, by the fall and then maybe, you know, maybe even have buildings up by the fall.
Pretty aggressive.
Pretty aggressive.
Three or four months. That's why I'm asking for dampers on the bell and...
And we've already had the applicant indicate that they're going to be using a lower intensity backup alarm and that...
That's right, I appreciate it.
They're going to be very careful about the hours, and that's good. So thank you.
And your concern really is just when we put in, when they would put in the pavement and the...
Well, that would be the same, same scenario with the noise and everything, even with the paving that was done and the rollers that are on the paver, never mind the rollers on the dirt, because you're going to deal with hardpan and everything.
Right.
You're familiar with that.
I'm very familiar with the site. This is the third proposal we've had for this site, as you're aware. And this is actually, in my opinion, a much lower impact use of the site than what was originally proposed way back when. But I appreciate your comments. Is anyone else like?
Well, I would like to also say, given the noise scenario, if the board consider even putting sensors on the vibration and noise to monitor this project?
I think that's a little overkill personally.
I'm just asking.
Okay.
And, you know, that's something that you could discuss with the applicant overall.
Okay, thank you.
Is this also just, I'm sorry, one last question. Is this just, is this a chief concern? I mean, you can't speak for every abutter, but is this a chief concern of other abutters?
One of the other abutters.
Is this a concern too, of being concerned?
One at a time, please. So if you're done, the next abutter?
Yeah, you could, like I said, I submitted a letter of my concerns, the portion of consideration. I gave some fragment information in that to you guys that I hope that you would at least consider in this whole project overall, because my life is being changed totally as I go forward here, and there's reasons for it, but I have no choice right now.
Okay, thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Cindy Foraway.
Do you want to sit in or?
No, that's okay. I've been sitting enough. I am at 15 Glendale Road. It was my parents' residence. My mom just passed away. I'm right here, so I'm at 15 Glendale Road, so my backyard is going to be right here. And I believe you said that the setback here was only 25 feet?
No, it's 50.
It is 50?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think storage units are great, but we have a number of them in East Long Meadow already. And I know you're saying that there aren't going to be boats and things like that, motor homes, et cetera, but is that stipulated in your building permit or what have you that such things will not be on the premises?
There's nothing on the site plan that provides a space to put them.
Right.
And so...
Functionally, we can't fit that. Unless they floor goat, you know...
If they wanted to change the site plan, they would have to come back to us and show us where they're going to put them. Okay? So that's how that gets controlled.
Okay. And my other concern is I know there's going to be the fencing, obviously, abutting here, and with the, we're all concerned about the trees, that kind of thing. But back here, you're not going to have fencing that encloses the whole property?
No. Only, so the active area of the property will be completely fenced?
So people can come up from?
No, no, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm not explaining it well apparently, and all there's, I know anybody's struggling with this too. So the entire perimeter of the active storage yard will be fenced?
Totally enclosed.
Totally enclosed.
Okay, all right.
Need that security, yes.
Right. And then my other concern is about because my backyard is right here, and I don't know where your lights are and how they're going to be facing with sensors or what have you, is that it's going to be facing onto my backyard and those types of things because I am a primary about...
The lights that they're using are what they call wall packs. They're the lights that shine down along the walls as opposed to streetlights that spread out a lot further. We do have a lighting plan from them that shows that the lighting ends, the ends at the property line, so that it's not going to have a spillover onto the property. And with the trees there, that will, that will, that will second that, so that there won't be any, there should not be any spillover.
Okay. And so there's no way then that you folks can stipulate as to the size of trees that can be put in, so that way we don't have to wait for the trees to grow five or 10 years? It can already be something that is X amount of feet tall?
Well, they have a proposal for this, okay? Maybe you could tell us what version you're proposing to plant.
Yeah, so I have actually fairly good size stuff. I have Douglas fir. I have six to seven feet in height that we're proposing. It's pretty substantial, you know, for nursery stock. I have white pine, we're also six to seven feet. And then I have black tubalow at two and a half caliber, which is pretty standard. And then I have some other shrubs that, you know, they'll grow as their container, they don't grow. For the buffer here, it's all the white pine and that.
So you're starting out at six feet, roughly, six to eight feet.
But what's the grade though? So that's the grade?
No, this is at the top.
At the top of the grade.
And then you've got the additional distance from the top of grade to the level.
Okay.
What would they grow to if they started six to eight feet?
Twenty?
Yeah, I have pine and white pine, and they're big.
Mighty trees.
Big at all.
Eighty feet. So, which, to be honest with you, at some point, we'll probably have to take them out and replant something because they'll grow too big. But we're planting fir five to 10 years out, right? It's a balancing act. It doesn't stay the same size.
Okay, thank you.
Another, anyone else wish to speak? Please, the woman in back here.
My name is Victoria Lova, and we live in 95 Edmund Street, which is the very last house on Edmund. I just tried to figure out, it's, I think it's like here.
More towards the north, Victoria.
Huh?
More towards the north.
This way?
So it's past Fifth Street?
Yeah.
Go over here. Go north over from my property?
Fifth Street, right?
Northwest?
This is Fifth here.
Maybe if you use the local...
So it's like a few houses here.
Let's see if I can help you here. So we are right in here, so this is Edmund Street here?
Yes.
Okay.
So we live here, so the very last house. So project is here.
Yes.
So it's basically going to be on our backyard because we have almost acre land and...
I'm not sure exactly where, I'm having trouble figuring out where.
A route?
Yep.
It's where, it's the north side or east-west side of that building I said to remove?
Right here.
It's right where she's pointing, her property, that right in there.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So, okay, sorry.
Yeah, my, I have few concerns because we have five kids, and the first is a construction project because I believe, you know, to remove our feet of dust, maybe soap dusty. And one of my child has allergies, so it could be, you know, not healthy. It could be more of health issues for them. And plus, this area, it's really up to the hill. So it's like even in the future, it's still lighting in, so we can really see the whole So my concern about, and plus, I don't know, about vibration, our house is, I believe it's one of the oldest, it's almost 15 years. And imagine all that vibration can really affect our house.
Yeah. I can, I can speak to those items.
Yeah.
So you live, you think she lives here?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
She's on that hill of the property?
Yeah, it's going to be right in our backyard because we also have a few feet in the woods. Our property goes there.
Yep. So bunch of good questions. During construction, obviously, dust is always a concern. Typically, what we provide through either the planning board or at least to the contractor, we provide, we'll call it a construction phase operation and maintenance plan. Typically, we handle erosion controls during construction because, you know, a lot of times there might be temporary cuts and fills that we need to make sure that the contractor's keeping a eye on it and bringing piles with zilt fence or putting temporary sedimentation basins in so that, you know, during construction, if it's all raw, or not all, but a portion is a raw site, we could address that. So that's one of the things that we would be putting together. We can, we could provide that to the planning board, but essentially what that would be is it would be an outline for the contractor to follow for how they're going to address excavating material typically. We would not want and would dictate that they do not take and go rub the entire site all at once. We would want them to do things as surgical as possible. But ideally, what's going to happen is they'll leave the topsoil, they'll strip the topsoil back in areas, excavate down, kind of repair the ground, and we'll try to work surgically our way back. The reality of that is it will probably move in this direction. We'll need a haul road in and out of here so the material will be coming out. So there will likely be dust, but as part of that construction process, we would need to make sure that there was water on site. Oftentimes, we'll have a watering truck or if the water's available right at Baldwin Street, we would have a temporary connection and we would be able to spray the site. And then there's, there's other options as well, but generally speaking, we would be watering the site during construction, especially in the summer months. And there's no question that that would be a concern. As far as your, your view of the facility, so I would say if anybody, depending on the grade change on your property, sounds like it climbs, there is the possibility that you will have a view of this looking down. I don't know.
A-ara, that's a.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Take it through the chair.
I'm sorry.
She's talking with him.
So, you know, it looks like the grades continue to climb, so yeah, she probably would have a view down even with a six or seven foot hedge, so that is the possibility.
But our house is really high, it's like on the top of the hill. And I really don't have a big concern because it's really on the top and we have a big tree, so it seems like that roots really holding the house and.
Hope the roots aren't holding your house up, but.
I mean, but 15 years old house.
So typically what can be done is there can be, you know, when they do demolition, there's a pre-demolition survey, so, you know, maybe there's a pre-excavation survey that's done, we can go and, you know, if we're given the permission, go take a look at the house and see what might, concerns there might be. This excavation will be fairly minimal near the property line. It will be more expensive as you get approximately 15, 50 feet away from the property line. So we would be happy to, you know, throw, include that in the operation and maintenance plan for the construction phase work.
So you're saying you're planning to finish all, the whole project?
I mean, I think that's a little aggressive. I would love to believe that would happen, but the reality is I hope they have slabs for the building by then, but, you know, depending on the outcome of tonight's hearing and some other factors, they would like to start fairly, fairly soon.
Yeah, because I also have, I said, I have five kids and our youngest still have a nap every, every day, so it's going to be.
Construction workers like a nap too.
I know. Hopefully the same time.
Thank you. But we can, through the neighborhood, we can certainly have some outreach.
Hi, good evening. Marilyn Richards, 342 Pimbers. George, if you would, or somebody, explain to me clarification, the parcel just above the little office area, I believe that's Mr. A Bear's parcel, I'm not sure, but where is the actual property line? His property line?
It's shown on.
Okay. Where is the actual zone line?
The zone line is above it. That building is industrial.
Yeah, this is.
That, where?
That building is in the industrial zone. That lot is entirely within.
Totally?
The yellow house is totally industrial zone, yes. The industrial zone runs down my property to Glendale Street and the, the yellow house is an industrial. So my house is 12 feet from the boundary line, which is the, is the district line. My house is actually 12 feet off the boundary line.
This is his, this is Phil's house right here. And this is.
Who's this? Okay, all right.
Mine is the one above the building.
So the, so that house, then what I was questioning is the buffers are accurate?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question because I didn't see any trees planted.
Yeah, that, that is currently a business. At one time.
Okay.
In other things, but it is in the industrial zone.
It was a residential.
It was residential originally until they changed the master plan by, when they made a mistake and they didn't go around it. And the two lots that were behind it, that ran actually beside me, ended up becoming industrial by that mistake at a town meeting and essentially even changed that district line behind my house, which prior was coming off the corner of my property going across there.
Okay, I appreciate it. I thought there was a difference between the district line and the zone line for his property and now I know why.
Yeah.
Because it happened previously. Thanks for the clarification.
Anyone else? Please.
No, he can go first.
No, please, let's hear the comments if we can get, let the principals speak.
Good evening. Karen Seibert-Kurvik, 64 Edmund Street. They said earlier that traffic would not be a factor. We now have clean fit on Glendale and it is now, or Baldwin Street, and yes, it is a factor. We are very lucky that the town put in stop signs on Glendale and Edmund, so it slows them down a little bit, but yes, it will, traffic will be a factor. Also too, someone said previously that we already have storage units. How many do we need in our town? Thirdly, how is this going to affect my property value? Okay? And how about open space? Why can't the town purchase at a reasonable amount of money for the gentleman to have this open space and maybe make another kids' play field because we don't have enough sports fields in town or, or something like that? Because again, it is going to affect our, our property value.
Okay. I appreciate your concerns. Remind people that this is an industrial zone, that it was proposed for portions of it to become residential. That was shut down entirely because people didn't want houses back there. It's a residential property, it's privately owned, it's a, sorry, an industrial property, it's privately owned. We've had proposals back there before that were higher impact and this one now is coming before us. As to whether or not they've got enough market for these things, that's up to the principals to figure out.
May I speak again?
Please.
Yes, the, when you said they rewinding houses before, I believe the abutters weren't upset their houses were what they were going in there. It was the number of houses that they were shoving in that we were worried about the traffic. So that's correct. And I do have one other question. The, you guys said the clientele. Usually someone that owns a house doesn't need storage space. It's someone that has an apartment and would have a storage space, so. And you're going to have this open 24 hours a day? How many hours because?
For commercial access.
Commercial access? Is it going to be 24 hours a day or is it going to be like nine to five?
May I?
May nine to five. Okay. Because we do, unfortunately in our area, we are starting to have problems with break-ins and if someone comes, someone that has access at any hour, that would be more traffic that could cause more problems. Thank you.
There was, through the chair, there was a market study done by the proponents. They looked closely at it. They looked actually very detailed at the actual makeup of the units themselves, so 10 by 10s or 10 by 20s and how many of each, and so that was looked at pretty extensively. So there is certainly a market that looked at the existing facilities in the area. As far as apartments, yeah, I would agree. I think people that own single family homes also use storage units. I can tell you, I have one. I have probably two. But that said, there are proposals on the table for higher end apartments in town, so it's not necessarily going to be, you know, apartments aren't necessarily about that.
I'm sorry, I wasn't referring to apartments are a bad thing. I'm just saying that most people that own their homes don't have storage.
I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, I.
You have comments?
Hi, I'm Priscilla Paul and I live at 27 Glendale and I'm extremely concerned about the traffic. It has tripled since the gym went in, down on Baldwin. I have an autistic child who plays in the driveway. When we bought the house, we had no traffic. It's a very skinny street and now we have all kinds of traffic. There's can be 50 cars down by the gym. And guess where they're coming? Up over the hill, down Glendale. And the other thing is you said you're going to have cameras to show what people are bringing in. Are they going to check all the boxes and all the containers? Of course not.
I don't think they can by law.
Right. So you will not know what's going in the most storage units? Always.
Well, I, all I can tell you is we have three other storage units, storage spaces like this in town that I'm aware of and we have not had any issues at those, that I'm aware of, at any of those, those properties.
So if we have three, why do we need another one?
Well, as I said, whether or not it makes economic sense is not up for us to decide, it's up to the proponents to decide. If they think that they can, they've got a market for this, they think they've got a market for this.
Okay. And you said that we can't make that a dead end because it's privately owned property on the other side?
The planning board can't do anything about that. If you want to petition DPW, okay, to make that a dead end street, you can do that. Okay? But we have no control over that.
If you would like to submit a petition to close a street, you would submit it to the town clerk, who would then submit to town council for a public hearing. So 10 people in your neighborhood can submit that petition to close the street and they will take it under advisement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Take it back to the board. I, before I ask things, I do have one concern and do we, has the, has the zoning enforcement officer issued a zoning determination?
The zoning, the zoning board, the building commissioner had provided these comments and that was after review of the submitted documents for the self-storage, Zero Grove Avenue. He did not have any issues or concerns at that, at this time.
Okay. I would like to refer this back to him, given the opinion of town council relative to the setback that was issued by our town council in 2005, the issue being whether the topmost building in the last row meets the zoning period.
Can you see that?
Yes. You can?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Have any comments?
Please, please do.
By the way, a comment, if that, I, that issue was raised the other day by Mr. A Bear with me in my office.
Yes.
By the way, a comment, if that interpretation is accurate, we'll remove the building.
Okay.
So I mean, if you wanted to, for purposes of your deliberations, that we'll remove the building if that, if that interpretation is accurate.
The, the person who makes that determination would be, is he the zoning enforcement officer? Okay? A building commissioner, basically? Because he's the one who actually enforces zoning and would, is responsible for deciding whether something meets zoning or not. Okay? And so I would like to refer to him.
Sure.
With that opinion so that we can get clarification on that. Okay? I think that, that's pretty credible.
Thank you.
Okay?
So while you're at it, so when he's making the determination, can he cite in the use table residency and industrial uses for a self-storage unit as part of his opinion?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get that Tracy?
Okay, any other questions from the board? John?
No, just absorbing all the public comments and a lot of the concerns that really come up.
I'm good.
Is it a pain?
So.
Is it a pain?
I'll take it to the board at this point.
So Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned it and you mentioned it, so I think there's three of us who've come on within the last year anyway. You've mentioned at least, I think you said, three other occasions use of this property has come before the planning board.
Yeah, what were those?
So can you give us some quick background?
Okay, two, actually, two that I recall. One was the fire restoration place, okay? Prospect Builders wanted to put in storage and offices and everything back there. They were going to have their temporary housing stored there, okay, which they provide. And they were going to put buildings.
Trailers.
Trailers. And they were also going to rent out additional warehouse space basically up there, okay? That was withdrawn largely due to comments from the abutters and the fact that they found a place on Shaker Road that they could use instead. The second one was Mr. Carabetta's proposal to divide the property into industrial and residential and put some houses back in there. He was thinking of warehousing or something like this on the industrial part of it, but he was more interested in getting houses in the back end of the property. That was a zoning change that went to town council and was not approved. Okay, so those are the two proposals that came in before this. The Prospect Builders ones would have been much more active than this particular proposal because it would have been active businesses with trucks coming in and out on a regular basis. And, and the question came up then, which is why the 2005 opinion came in as to the relationship of the buffer to the zoning line versus to the residence use, okay? Because, and, and, you know, I think what it came down to was just because the parcel looks like this today, you could still take the residential part of it and make it residential, but, but you wouldn't have buffer if we're not taking the buildings down. So, but I would like to get, you know, from the zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, that.
So logic would hold that this would be the least or most passive use of that property?
Most passive one's been proposed so far. Yeah, okay. Enough that somebody couldn't come in with something completely different. There's, there's nothing to stop somebody from coming in here and saying, I'm going to put a factory there. Okay? Because it's industrial. Okay? Tony?
Well, I know, I'm just kind of looking at this more from a global picture. This is a piece of property that can be developed and the question seems to be over the last several years, what is the best use for this property? And I've heard a lot of complaining about a year ago or more about residential being here and now I've been given a letter that says, I'm against this and why can't they put a residential project in here? I mean, we just went through this a year ago when a developer wanted to do a residential project and the room was filled with people saying, I don't want houses in my backyard. And the board made it clear a year ago that, okay, you don't want houses in your backyard, but just keep in mind that the property is zoned to allow industrial uses back there and just be aware of the fact that a day may come when someone may put an application before the board, that will include a use that will conform with their current zoning. And now I'm hearing that that doesn't work either. I almost, I almost get the impression it's almost like, I don't want anything back there no matter what it is. So that's kind of the way, way I'm seeing this today.
Okay. Certainly, can we keep one meeting here and address things from board because we can't hear people if there's conversations going on in the background. You had comments? Again, identify yourself please.
I'm Priscilla Roche Adich and I live on 13 5th Street. So this whole project is going to affect our whole property and value of our house. And also I don't understand, we have like four storage places in town and all of them are like outskirts of town. And this one is so close to our property and actually in our backyard. And I do have a question. Would any one of you would like to have this project in your backyard?
Well, if I didn't want to have it, I probably wouldn't buy a house next to, next to an industrial zone.
When we bought this house, there was like, they told us it's like a wetland and no one's going to build this. That's why we bought it.
Well, that's why you have to question what real estate agents tell you. Okay?
I, I don't know. And also this project is so close to our downtown that needs a lot of work. And I don't know why the town allows businesses so close to our downtown. Instead of having nice and beautiful places that we can walk with kids, we can go places, we can sit at the cafe, no, that, that ugly thing is going to be in our backyard.
Well, I can tell you the history of this.
There could have been houses back there.
Yeah, but it was like not only houses, that was like part of the houses and part of the industrial. So it would be like a mess and actually they wanted to open Edmund Street and which is really a bad idea because, you know, it's.
Well, let me just give you a little history of why this is industrial. Way back when, we had railroad that went right through the middle of town. It's now a trail, of course, but it was a railroad. And when the zoning was put in, because it was a railroad, all the land along the railroad was zoned industrial. Because where do you want industry? You want it next to the railroad so you don't have to have trucks going from the railroad to the industries. So everything along Shaker Road, all the way up to North Main Street behind Stop &amp; Shop, was industrial and we had stone cutting places and other industries along there and that has never changed. Okay?
I understand this. That was very long time ago and there is no railroad, there is no need for this thing.
Well, you know, the point is that if, if someone wants to.
Well, you know, the point is that if someone wants to change the zone, there's a procedure for doing that. And it's to go to the town council, okay, and request a zone change, and hold hearings and so on. But point being, that this is a piece of property that is very low taxed right now. It's on the tax rolls. Developing it will be a positive for the town in the sense that it will increase the taxes the town takes in without putting any more kids in the school. And that's why we have industry in this town, and why we have great schools, is because we have the industrial park and a lot of industry in town. And this happens to be in an industrial zone. There's a sheet metal factory, or was, down the street from it. So it's not the first factory or industrial thing in the area.
But do you think this belongs next to the residential area?
With the proper buffers, yes.
Mr. Dendler, would you like to live next to this thing?
As I said, if I didn't wanna live next to it, I wouldn't buy a house next to an industrial zone. But I think, I think we've had the conversation.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
I agree too. But I know it's going to be ugly, and it's going to affect our lives. I have grandkids who come over and sleep over, and the noise, and the lights, and everything is going to be unbearable.
Thank you. Sir?
John, do you have a comment?
I'd just like to address Mr. Rick's concern on your statements. You seemed to be confused on the last site plan rezoning scenario. The reason it was shut down, because it wasn't being rezoned totally residential, it was only gonna be a partial. And essentially, the district line was gonna run 50 feet behind my property line, and then Mr. Carabeta was gonna basically have the property line be on my property line, and he's gonna use the 50-foot buffer zone on the residential houses that he was gonna build. So in effect, it wasn't being rezoned totally residential, it was only gonna be a partial. And you could only vote to either approve his plan as predicted, or reject it, or he didn't wanna change it to a total residential rezoning. I would have supported a total residential rezoning if that was the case, but that wasn't what was presented to the planning board.
Okay, thank you. We got it.
And there was two site plan reviews with no misquote, 2004 and 2008, if you remember. Not one.
Okay.
Any further comments?
So I'm coming at this from a totally just new perspective, and I'm not aware of all the history behind it. But I think the thought that opened up in my mind when hearing a lot of these concerns was, let's just say, let's just entertain the complete hypothetical that this project wouldn't go through. And it looks like a pretty low-key type of business. What if something, and we weren't on this board, and there were totally different board members, and they went ahead and approved, approved something that was more, you know, high-key and something a little bit more intense. So, you know, if I was looking at it, and if I was a resident here, and, you know, first of all, if I were to have moved in, I would have probably wanted to know, inquire to see what the, how everything is zoned, but of course, it could have, it could have changed. I don't know, that's another question I had. You know, was this always industrial, or was it?
No, it was residential.
It was residential?
No.
I can also, just to give you some perspective, there is an approved project. You know, this is, we've based, other than, we requested a certificate of compliance saying that we weren't going to do the last project for conservation. But there is, from a planning board standpoint, an approved project for the site that includes three industrial buildings, almost same footprint, but more intensive. So that project is already approved. What we're here tonight is for, obviously, for this project, which we agree is less intensive. But just so, you know, when we're talking about what could go here, there's literally an approved project for three industrial buildings right now.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest at this point that I'm not comfortable with voting on this until we get a determination for that last building. Because I don't wanna approve a site plan conditionally on a comment from the, on a ruling from the building commissioner. I don't like doing conditionals, because we've got a plan, and we either accept the plan as is, or we redo the plan and continue the hearing until it's resolved. So I'm gonna suggest at this point that we continue the hearing to our meeting in July, which is July-
Did we get on the ninth as well?
No.
17th.
July 17th. And-
Let's try.
I know that's gonna delay you, but I think we really need to get that determination from the building commissioner about whether or not that last building and the total length of the building at the very far back are acceptable or not. I don't think he was aware of the town attorney's ruling.
Nor were we.
Okay. Yeah. And I think that that needs to be looked into.
Absolutely.
So I'll entertain a motion to continue?
I second.
No, I need a motion.
Motion to continue.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, Chris? Okay, so we'll continue this to July 19th? Okay? All those in favor?
July 17th.
Opposed?
July 17th.
July 17th, I'm sorry, July 17th. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for your comments. We appreciate your concerns.
East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 19, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the East Long Metal School Committee Conference Room located in East Long Metal High School, 180 Maple Street. East Long Metal to consider request for case site 2018-1 Lex Nail Salon to construct an ADA compliant ramp at an existing structure at .33 plus or minus acre site located at 13-15 Gerard Avenue, 2A-6457 in the Business Zone District. Advocate Andrea Martin, 84 Willow Brook Road, Long Metal. Information regarding this application, I file with the inspection, excuse me, for inspection, East Long Metal Planning Board's Office located in Town Hall, 60 Center Square, and is available for review by the public during normal business hours, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
So this, is anyone here to address this?
Yes.
Come on up. Tell us who you are.
Michael Smith, Smith Associates Surveyors. And also Andrea Martin, property owner.
Andrea Martin, property owner. And Lex?
She's got it.
Some Chey Daniels.
She's the business operator.
Okay. All you're proposing is to put a ramp on?
Yes. I don't know if they have a copy to the section here or not, they've got one.
We have copies, yes. Okay, so-
Just coming off the existing porch.
Okay.
Running up the property line to a handicap spot.
Uh-huh.
Meeting all the ADA requirements.
Okay.
And that's it. Existing parking lot.
And is there an existing site plan for this? Or is this a new site plan?
This is a new site plan.
New site plan.
Yeah.
Okay. And the parking meets the requirements for the business?
Yes. Yeah, I got the parking down here. The upstairs is an existing two-bedroom unit.
Okay.
Downstairs will be closed nail salon, three employees, have the hours of operation.
Right.
Requiring six places, six faces. Apartment two for a total of eight. There are 11 in one handicap, so a total of 12 spaces.
Okay.
So more than enough parking, and the ramp is-
Okay. So Connie, this is a site plan because we didn't have a site plan before, and it's a change to the footprint, right?
Yes, and it came to us through the zoning determination by the Court and Police Office.
Okay, very good. Because I know that handicap ramps are exempt from setback requirements, you know?
Yeah.
But we still need a site plan. Okay. Any questions?
No.
Straightforward? Russ? Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
First of all, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to-
Speak to this. Hearing none.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess they were all that-
Man, do I wish we were third on the agenda.
I'm probably dying, I feel bad. I'm sorry, I don't know. This is the way things are done.
Oh yeah, do they have a appeal process or anything? When can the contractor want to know when he could start the project?
It's a 20-day appeal.
20-day appeal.
20 days from now?
Yeah.
It's actually 14 days for us to get it to the town clerk.
But it won't be 14 days.
Well-
Hopefully not.
We're gonna, we'll move this along as quickly as possible.
So, I'm sorry, so you're saying 20 days?
So staff has 14 days to file the decision with the town clerk's office. From that 14-day period of filing is a 20-day appeal period. So we tell people, anticipate your building permit 35 days from the day of this hearing. Just as all across the state, the statistics.
But most likely sooner.
Or you start under your own risk, that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can start under your own risk, which means if you start building it and somebody appeals and wins on appeal, which I can't imagine happening.
Yeah, it's an ADA complaint, no bad review.
Yeah, you would have to take it off. But since there's no controversy about this one, okay, and you meet all the requirements, first of all, I doubt if anybody's gonna appeal it. And if they did, there's nothing to appeal, because you meet all the requirements. But statutorily, it's a 20-day thing. So if you start it, and you get it done, and somebody did appeal and went on appeal, you'd have to take it off.
Have to remove it.
Okay.
So I could ask my contractor to start if I understood what you're telling me.
If you understand that, yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
South of East Long, where our planning board will hold a public hearing on June 19, 2018, at 6:00 PM. East Long Metal School Committee Conference Room located in East Long Metal High School, 180 Maple Street. East Long Metal to consider the special permit case SP 2013-19 by Singular Wireless PVC LLC AT&amp;T to add, remove, modify, replace transmission equipment on existing tower at 1.66 plus or minus acres located at 30 Benton Drive, assesses parcels ID 6-4-0 in Residence A Zoning District. Applicates, applicant's agent Edward D. Tarr, Esquire, Brown Runick, 10 Memorial Boulevard, Providence, Rhode Island. Information relating to this application, I file for inspection, East Long Metal Planning Board's Office located in Town Hall, 60 Center Square, is available for review by public during normal business hours, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM Monday through Friday.
Good evening. May I foremention Edward Parry? I'm an attorney of Brown Runick.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that I got it right. Right there. Sorry about that. I'd send it if we got that wrong.
We'd want that.
We'd quickly get over it, though.
Good, good.
So I'm here representing New Singular Wireless, which is AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T has been located on this pole since 2002, shortly after it was constructed. In 2009, we modified our special permit to increase the size of the mounting bracket, which was granted. Currently, we have nine antennas on the existing 190-foot pole, and this is the elevation here. AT&amp;T is not at the top, we're at about 150 feet, so we're the fourth carrier down on the pole. We currently have, and we have a before-and-after depiction of the antennas. We currently have nine antennas on the mounting structure. We're proposing to replace six of those. Three of the originals will remain. So we'll have three antennas that are 55 inches long. We'll have six antennas in total that are 96 inches long. There are already three antennas that are 96 inches. It's pretty straightforward. I know it's been a long evening for the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We're not excavating, we're not working outside of the compound. We're actually removing an equipment cabinet, because all of these devices are now going electronic through a cloud-based system. So we'll be installing equipment in the existing racks. With that, I think this is about as straightforward as it gets. Like I said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I won't take up any more of board's time.
Basically replacing antennas and taking a section out.
Well, we're taking a piece of-
Box out.
A box at the base of the, of the tower.
Yeah.
There are equipment cabinets that attach to each of the antennas.
Questions?
This is not gonna be a long project or relatively straightforward, as you said.
It will not. Once we get through this process, we'll pull a building permit. I expect, you know, we would get some kind of cherry picker crane out there and swap out the antennas. I would expect no more than a day or two, as I said, no excavating.
Questions?
We did this last year for Verizon.
Yeah. So visually, no one's gonna notice any, basically, from day one to day two, no one's gonna notice any difference.
So I went by the tower-
With the exception of minus of a box.
Yeah, I went by the tower before the interdepartmental meeting, and I cannot imagine that anybody will be able to see the difference. And I think if I did it tonight, no one would know.
But if I had AT&amp;T, I'd get better reception, right?
You would.
Okay.
And we also sell phones, so anybody who's-
Open it up to the public. Are there any questions or comments on this one?